We're going to start the meeting. I'm going to turn it over to our solicitor to run this hearing. Mr. Dooley?
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Shapinski. Yes, now, the item for the board's consideration this evening is to conduct a hearing on the application, the charter school application of the North Penn Charter School Collaborative. Let me just start by making a few announcements with regard to the process of the hearing. Again, this is a public hearing. I will make a few exhibits as part of the record, and then we will turn the hearing over to the applicant to make a presentation. At the conclusion of that presentation, the administration will have some questions. The board members here may have some questions. At the conclusion of that, it will be time for public comment or questions. Anyone here who wishes to speak or ask questions with regard to this application will be given every opportunity to do so. I ask you all to please note that we have a court reporter here, which is required. She's taking notes of testimony of this hearing, and I ask that we all be respectful of that. And what I mean by that is that the court reporter cannot do her job if two of us are speaking at the same time, and also that you speak up and speak clearly. Also, anyone who does have comments, we will ask that you come to the podium and state your name and your address, so that that can become part of the record. Before asking the applicant to present its case, there are a few exhibits I would like to make part of the record. Exhibit number one would be the full application by the North Penn Charter School Collaborative. Exhibit number two is the advertisement that our office prepared, the advertisement of tonight's hearing. And exhibit number three would be the proof of publication of that advertisement, so that it's clear that proper legal notice has been given. Also, I would like to point out to everyone, including the applicant, you may notice that a couple of board members were unable to join us this evening. The procedure will be for those board members to continue to participate in the decision by virtue of having the opportunity to review the notes of testimony. So that's how I anticipate proceeding in this regard. Couple of them, it was difficult to get the full board together for two successful nights for these hearings, so that's what we've done here. All right, I think that's it. At this point, I would like to turn it over to the applicant. I would ask that you introduce those who are going to be testifying, and then you'll be sworn in, and then we can move forward with the testimony.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you very much for your time. My name is Wendy Ormsby, and I'm the founder of the Sauterton Charter School Collaborative. To my left is Jennifer Arevolo, and she will be the CEO and principal of the North Penn Charter School Collaborative. To my right is Michael Brooks, and he is our school council. And to the left of Jennifer is Lisa Kern. Lisa is the board president.
Right.
We ha-- yes?
I would ask you all to be sworn in, if you could, Celeste.
(inaudible)
Thank you.
As you know, we are seeking to replicate the Sauterton Charter School Collaborative. First, we want to discuss with you why we, the information that we have to share with you about why SCSC, as we call it, is a model worthy of replication. SCSC has been ranked in the top 5% of Pennsylvania schools on PSSAs for the past five years. It exceeded AYP standards since AYP was measured. Last year, SCSC was named a 2012 Schools to Watch, which is a school that meets the academic and social needs of all its children, and we were the first charter school in Pennsylvania to win this award. Two years ago, we were promoted by the Department of Education in Harrisburg as one of only four charters worthy of replication, and this was in an application to the U.S. Department of Education. And we're rated number-one school district, the number-one middle school, and the number-three elementary school in Pennsylvania on schooldigger.com for the 11-12 school year. That as an introduction to what North Penn Charter School Collaborative will offer. It will offer a model virtually identical to SCSC, to the SCSC model, to North Penn families, who really have been shut out recently, out of the process of enrolling in SCSC because of the level of interest from Sauterton families. As you know, Sauterton area school district children get preference. It will offer a smaller learning environment with highly individualized instruction for all students, experiential learning with less text-based instruction, and inclusive learning with no special education rooms in the school. This is our mission. It's a mission that we've had at SCSC for 12 years since we opened. It's a mission we review every year to make sure we're staying true to it. At the top, you see experiential, hands-on learning, a pillar of what we do. The bottom-left, individualized, inclusive, and flexible groupings. On the right, strong parent partnerships. And when we first reflected on this, doing all of those things, we recognized that we needed to create vibrant, adult learning systems to ensure that learning was going on with the adults and the faculty at the school. We'll talk about each of these in a little more detail.
So I'm going to talk a little bit about sort of fleshing out the different points. So experiential and hands-on learning. The school will be using a project-based approach to the learning of curricular units. Skill development will be embedded with children learning questioning and researching skills and engaging in, I believe, an exciting curricula. Using the environment as an integrating context, there will be varied and extensive field work versus field trips that support and extends the learning of our students. Additionally, in addition to standard report cards, is that students will be assembling collections of their own work through portfolio assessment that will show progress, not only over the year, but also through their whole career. The individualized, inclusive, and flexible groupings. Every student will have an individual learning plan. Some of the hallmarks of the programs that we've utilized is Singapore Math, and we do math and will continue to do math at the same time, allowing for students to move through fluidly into the grade levels that make most sense for them. Students are assessed through open-ended math prompts and monthly data analysis of their progress. The reading program that we have utilized and has been a real hallmark of our success is the 100 Book Challenge, that students have a leveled reading system where teachers are serving as guides and embedded conferencing happening on a daily basis. Students are taken home books and provided with ample opportunities to practice their reading. In addition, the Making Meaning program has been very important to help our teachers teach the discrete reading comprehension skills to all students. Another high point is the idea of children with IPs being fully included into their home base or classroom. Small group and individualized instruction will be happening all day long for all of our children. Another difference is the multi-age configurations, with students being able to stay with teachers for two years, also being able to be the oldest and the youngest within different grade levels. We have traditional-looking classrooms, but in addition, our school will be configured into having common room spaces that allow for learning to happen outside of their classrooms to allow for extension and remediation. And finally, what we believe is the most important part of the success of our school is that multiple teachers will be in all of our classrooms during the school day.
The third part of the pyramid talks about strong parent partnerships, and some examples of that. Our parents participate in the upkeep of our school at Saturday workdays. And believe it or not, that has really been, I think, a key factor financially, and I would estimate that probably has saved SCSC upwards of $1 million since we opened. You'll see later, and may have seen in our budget, we run a lean organization, and this is one of the reasons that we're able to do that, because the parents are invested in helping us maintain our building. We also have monthly, another kind of keystone that we do is we have monthly evening collaboration sessions, and those sessions are held once a month on a weeknight. Parents and children are invited, and a whole variety of things can happen at those. Some are curricular, and some are more fun in nature, like the potluck dinner that we'll be having next week. So those monthly evening collaborations, excuse me, ECSs as we call them, they're really a time to build community, people to get to know each other, and that we're all on the same page, moving together. The majority of parents at our school volunteer more than four hours a month, and some of the examples are up there, they're chaperones, they can work in the classroom, they can coordinate activities, they can be a guest presenter, bringing their expertise in to mesh with the field work that's going on, or they can come into workday and help us on our Saturday workdays. But I will tell you, my belief is this is the most important thing, and this is the heart of our school. We have really taken a hard look, learning from the business world, at how do we create an environment where the adults are in a vibrant, exciting environment that they're helping to shape themselves. So some examples of that are we have bimonthly or twice a month program development sessions, and at the beginning of each year, those topics are determined by the faculty, and then they choose which PDFs, as we call it, they'd like to participate in. Those are robust meetings. They could cover anything from writing, looking at the writing curriculum, aligning standards, to scope and sequence on individualized learning. The faculty also has individual learning plans along with the students. So staff collaborate to write personal learning objectives, each one of them do. And the faculty selects professional development trainings that either they want to go out to experience, or they might actually come together and say, hey, let's bring this professional learning experience in. And I guess all of that really leads to that we really embrace the idea of collaborative decision-making. So adopting new programs, figuring out systems, changes that are needed in the systems, additional systems that are needed, really reflecting back and looking forward of our school. The faculty is involved in all of that with school leadership. In terms of professional development, teachers, our faculty is hearing collegial feedback, administrative feedback, and parent feedback. Parents are part of the 360-degree feedback process that we have to help all of us internal to the school look at ourselves and get better and more effective for the children.
So in trying to summarize, we want to pull out some of the key things that, for our first year of operation. So in the first year, we will be a K through 3 school, with the addition of a new grade to become a K through 8 school if the charter is granted the first year of the second charter. In terms of the faculty of the first year, we will have five and a half full-time certified teachers. This will include a part-time special education teacher and five full-time regular education teachers. Given those numbers, with the student population of 85, we have a student-teacher ratio of 15 to 1. However, a hallmark of our school is to look at the idea of having multiple teachers within classrooms, and so we will also be hiring 2.5 full-time educational support staff, which will reduce the student-to-teacher ratio to 11 to 1, with an average classroom size of 17. Our staff composition will involve, will include a full-time CEO, principal, a part-time business manager, office support staff. We will be contracting with speech occupational and physical therapists as needed by the IEPs, a certified school psychologist, part-time school nurse, and we'll also be having music, art, and PE.
So facility information. We have two options that we are looking at, but option one at this point is what we are currently negotiating a lease, and we are hopeful to have that worked out by the end of '12, 2012. It's on Church Road in North Wales. It's about 20,000 square feet. It requires really no renovations to move in in September and minimal renovations to use over the long term. You do have in front of you a letter of interest that we secured from the building owner, and the building owner is here this evening. The second option is on Allentown Road, and it's actually the old Sears Hardware Store in the Genardys, or used to be Genardys Shopping Center. That's option two, but like I said, option one is really the option that we are hoping to secure. Many of you may know this building as the old Lansdale Business School.
Option one.
Option one, right. And then finally, just a quick overview of our budget. As I said, traveling the state and being on the Coalition of Charter School, their board, I see often that we really are a lean organization. So our projected budget the first year is just over $1 million based on 85 students. And you can see, I'm not going to go through all the numbers, the instruction numbers, the support services, admin, pupil health, business, plant services, the building improvement of 60,000. I don't believe that we will need, if we end up working out option one, we will not need to improve that building. And so that 60,000 will bump down to the surplus, bringing a surplus of just under $100,000, which is a little bit less than 10% of revenue. That concludes our part of the presentation, and we look forward to answering any of your questions.
All right, well, thank you very much. Dr. Holman?
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. I'll be asking you a few questions, and then several other people will ask some questions as well. To start, I don't recall seeing in your application, what is your age of kindergarten and your age of beginners for your school?
So kindergarten, yes, it's still on. Kindergarten would be five years, and we would be adopting the policy that the state has passed, which would be you must be five by August 31st. In terms of first grade, did you ask also about first grade?
Yes.
In terms of first grade, I know currently, I can speak to what Sauterton chooses to do, and then we would be working out with North Penn following your policy for first grade. We know sometimes when children have done private kindergarten, sometimes the ages are a little bit different, so we would want to follow your policy.
Okay, thank you. Can you tell me, you refer in your application to 25% of your current waitlist being North Penn students, I'm sorry, North Penn residents. How many students do you have on your waitlist at this time?
We have 250 students on our waitlist, kindergarten through eighth grade, with the majority in the lower grades. So I would say K to third grade is where we have the majority. I actually did a count right now. We have 75 applicants on our waitlist for kindergarten.
You submitted some pre-enrollment cards with your application. Are those in addition to the children on the waitlist, or is there overlap between those two groups?
Those would be part of the waitlist, yes.
Part of the waitlist, okay, thank you.
We do have additional, since the application has been posted, we've had some additional people that have reached out to us.
Do you have any petitions from North Penn residents demonstrating a wider community support for establishing a sister school in the district?
We did submit to Mr. Dooley tonight some letters of community support.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want me to tell you, it was from Representative Robert Godschal, a local business person, and then also Smithbaum and Clemmons, Baum, Smith and Clemmons, excuse me, the accounting firm that's in North Penn.
Thank you. How many founding coalition members are residents of the North Penn School District?
One.
One, okay. I believe your application says there are no plans to recruit for additional founders?
Not for additional founding members, no.
And that your Board of Trustees will be the same at both schools?
That's correct.
Will it be the current Board of Trustees?
It will begin that way, yes. There's room in the bylaws to grow, but for the startup, it will begin with the same board.
And how many North Penn residents are on that board?
One.
One, okay.
I'm sorry, I want to make a correction.
Sure.
I thought you were asking about board members. Founding members is zero in North Penn, sorry.
Okay, thank you. That's okay, thank you. Do you agree that your application discusses instructional strategies and core content programs, but does not provide evidence of an articulated curriculum aligned with common core standards or Keystone anchors?
Our current, what I, what we chose to do is really to look at the overall content. Our curriculum has been aligned with state standards, and this year, we're working on aligning with the common core standards for full adoption in July 2013, which is when the state is mandating it.
Okay. And your application states you will offer Algebra I as a course when you get to middle school grades?
Yes.
And that course will be aligned, then, with the Keystone anchors?
Yes.
And require participation in the Keystone exam?
Yes.
Okay. Can you please provide examples of how your current school is meeting the needs of students with disabilities?
I think I can speak for all parents who have kids who have gone to our school, who have a variety of special needs, to say that they are important, valued members of our school, and additionally, the bar is set very high for them. So being a part of a regular home base where they're with peers, we expect a lot from them, too. And so I can speak as one of those parents, that the rigor, the attention, the acceptance, the environment, the culture, the diligence, the high bar is remarkable. I think any, I feel quite certain that any parent who had a child with special needs in our school would share, would share that.
And I would say, finally, in terms of the PSSA scores, that we have nearly achieved 100%, and so that's all of our students. So I would say that's a one bar.
Along that line, again, and I'm asking some of these questions because there wasn't a lot of detail in your application, can you please give examples of how your current school identifies students with special needs and maintains compliance with state law and IDEA?
I just wanted to begin, we have had two full-blown special education audits that we did, that we were very, very successful with, just kind of so you know that, we are following the law on all those really carefully, so.
And our process is really looking at first, the RTI process, that we first want to identify students and see if we can impact and intervene first before we actually go to the idea of special education. So we come at it from various ways. We've discovered one of the great ways in which we can come at things through special ed is to really look at speech and language. We have some students in the younger grades who really start to manifest some differences, and that's a first point of attack for us. We also use that idea of looking at that for our students who are English as a second language, where we're really looking at building the language and identifying some things to shore things up. And then we have a process by which, we have special education teachers that are assigned to each of our grade areas, and some are actually within classrooms. And so then we go through the process of really looking rigorously, having data points where we're continuing to monitor student. And then if we need to go to the third step, we really feel like the interventions are not uncovering as much as we want, we'll go to a full-blown ER.
Okay, thank you. Your application states that you will utilize a full inclusion model for all students, I believe. And do you agree that you are required, under the law, to provide a full continuum of special education services for students enrolled in your school?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I'm Robert Chuck, Director of Business Administration for the school district. Let me focus on the budget. Did your application include a five-year budget or a monthly cash flow analysis for the first year?
The, I have a five-year budget. It was not included, if you would like me to send that off to you. I didn't do a cash flow either.
Okay.
But no, it's, in the, in the application is a one-year budget, which is what I understood the application to mean. I can provide that to you if you'd like it, though, the five-year.
Yes, we'd like to see that if we could. The cash flow analysis for the first year relates to the next question. Describe your startup cost and how you'll fund those costs in the next eight months.
We would plan to do that the same way that we did SCSC, which is fund through the July and August payments that we get, the per pupil allotment, which is about 100, anticipated at about $160,000 to fund the various things that we need. Computers, SCSC is planning to buy 40 to 50 new computers this year, and so that will make all of those computers available to the new school for free. There also is some purchasing that we've been doing now, kind of anticipating this, that will not necessarily be furniture, chairs, desks, that won't necessarily be used at SCSC and can be used at North Penn Charter School.
Okay. What are the proposed contracted services for the school, and if there are any, please provide the details of those contracts?
The way that we run right now, we contract with PayUSA to run our payroll. We don't contract with many people. I have to think, PayUSA.
Michael.
Michael Brooks is our attorney.
Auditors.
Baum, Smith, and Clemmons is our auditors. We do all of our internal business management work. We don't hire anybody for that. We don't hire a management company. We, we contract with, for the speech therapy and occupational therapy.
A school psychologist.
And a school psychologist. We contract through a Halo Group.
Okay, thank you. Regarding the facility, we understand you are favoring option one at this point, and that option one was used as a school, correct?
That's correct.
Does, does your $60,000 in year one, you mentioned it in the PowerPoint?
Yeah.
Is that, you're saying that likely will not be needed, but do you have all of the furniture and the rest that is necessary to open that school?
We have some of the furniture that we would need to open the school, and the $160,000 that we would be getting in July and August, that would be used to fund the rest of the things that we would need.
Okay, talking about the food service. On page 64 of the application, you state that you will not have a formal food service plan at the school. Do you agree that all students must bring their own lunch to school in that case?
That's the way we do it at SCSC. It's worked for us.
Okay. Do you agree that students who are economically disadvantaged may have difficulty meeting this requirement on a daily basis?
I do understand that.
Regarding the facility, again, and the potential cost of opening that, does your startup funding cover the anticipated cost of the zoning, the land development, and building permit requirements for year one?
It does. Estimated costs, it covers, yes. We've spoken with the building owner, who has gone through a number of zoning variance processes and are working with him.
Now, where is that in the year-one budget?
That would be under purchased property services, 2,600, 400. And the $60,000 may be money that we would have to use from there if, depending on what the cost would be, since we don't have to renovate the building.
Okay, I think that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I just have a couple. Your application describes a position called the Director of Organizational Development. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And the application lists the duties of that position. Is that correct?
Could you ask that again? I'm sorry.
The application includes and lists the duties of that position?
That position would be something that would be brought onboard over time.
Okay.
The initial 85 students doesn't, it's kind of the same way SCSC started, which is it starts pretty lean and then slowly brings people on from either a part-time to a full-time status, or brings additional people on, but the first year or two, it's pretty, it's pretty lean.
It was part of my question because that position was not reflected in your budget.
Right, that's exactly right.
So then, then the question becomes, then, who will be performing those duties before you bring on that director?
It'll be shared with the individual at SCSC, which is myself, and so I'll be providing that on a part-time basis, if you will, but still be working for SCSC. And Jennifer also will be doing that. A lot of the work that I do is the business work as the Director of Organizational Development. I do kind of, I manage all of that, but there is a part-time business manager. So much of the work I do, there will be a staff at the new school to do that.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Shapinski, I think that concludes our questions. Now, time for the board.
Hi, thank you for your presence.
Hi, thank you for your presentation. I guess my only question is, do you provide any instructional, music instruction, instrument instruction?
In terms of the individualized with students, that's something that we are piloting for our older grade. The students in the younger grades do the recorder as a whole group, and they would also do some stringed instruments. But the idea of, I think in the traditional sense of children bringing in instruments and having an instrument teacher, we do not.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for coming tonight. I have several questions, partly because you are the first charter people we've talked to that have actually had a charter school. So I'm, I'm wondering, just things that I would just like to know generally, will this be run exactly like the one in Sauterston, the North Penn Charter School?
I would say the overall model, yes, but when you have new staff and you're sort of working, we want the culture to be translated, but I would say that in its sort of entirety, the way it systems, the mission would be very similar. But there would be some changes because we want to hire staff that has a similar idea about wanting to be involved in decision-making. So it may look somewhat different, but I would say the mission and the culture, we want them to be similar.
After your students have completed the eighth grade, is that correct? Then of course, in Sauterston, you're going to go to the four-year high school.
Right.
And so I'm thinking, how many actually go to Sauterston? Do they go to private schools? What happens? Have any idea percentage-wise what happens then? At the end of eighth grade, where they go?
The majority of our children go back to the high school, the public high school. Whether it's Sauterston High School, and we do have some, North Penn High School and so forth. We do have a few that have gone to various private schools around, and a couple have gone back to homeschooling. But the majority go into the public system.
Also thinking of the different high school, too. I'm sorry. I'm thinking of the high school as well. Sauterston has block scheduling and North Penn does not. I don't know if that would do anything as far as your curriculum would change. The two schools are different in some respects, in many respects.
The way that our seventh and eighth grade currently, they're together for two years, and so they are meeting the state standards in a two-year rolling curriculum. And so we do not do sort of block scheduling, but what I think what happens with our smaller numbers is there's integrated instruction that's happening. So the kids are definitely making a transition to the high school, the larger setting, various things are happening with that. I think there was a question that you also asked about the idea that in North Penn, ninth grade is still considered middle school. Prior to Sauterston students moving into the larger high school, it was, ninth grade was actually a middle school. So that's only been in the last two, four years that the ninth graders. And so we worked, we would work and continue to work with helping the students make the transition with the guidance counselors. So we've done that for all of our students because they've gone to a number of high schools. We have had probably six or seven different public high schools that the children have returned to. So we've worked with the guidance counselors in helping with that transition.
Also, with kindergarten, when they start in kindergarten, do they more or less stay with you then through the eight years?
You know, that's an interesting question because I wondered that at the beginning, too. Back in 2000 when we opened, especially since we're full-day kindergarten, I wondered if people would use our school as a full-day kindergarten and then, and then move. That has not been the case. We almost, we retain almost all of our kindergarten students come into first grade.
You read my mind.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes. First, I'd like to, before I begin, I'd like to talk about safety. But before that, when you get the five-year plan, Bob, if you could forward that to the rest of the board, I would appreciate it. I want to, again, talk about safety. North Penn School District, we have an Act 211 committee. We have a committee of the Board of Safe Schools Committee, and we have the OVAES program. We have buzzer systems, and we have the Raptor system now in all the elementary schools. Can you tell me what you have done? Can you address all of these issues, what you've done in your current school?
I can tell you what we've done in our current school. I'm not sure I'm going to get the exact language right. I might need to ask for help out here. We do have a buzzer system. The building is completely secure, and nobody can enter the building without buzzing in, and the only way that they can buzz in is through the front office. There is no camera, but there's a visual field that the person in the front office can see the person at the front door and buzz them in. We also have a foyer way that can be locked if somebody, for some reason, was to get in. That second entrance can actually be locked, so they're not able to enter the building.
We have, I know for our middle school, no, I'm sorry, all of them now, in addition to the buzz between the first and second, we have a camera so that you're on, on video. Do you have any, any Raptor systems? Are you familiar with the Raptor system?
No, I'm not familiar with it. We have the Montgomery County, I don't know the name of it. It's an emergency system with a button that we're hooked into the Montgomery County. You're nodding, so you know what I'm talking about.
We have that. That's called class.
That's, we have that.
Sometimes our superintendent has that if you get out of hand.
We have that.
The Raptor system is, if you've ever been over here at our VOTEC, when you walk in, you have to show your ID. They run it through a card reader, and we're connected to all the states. It doesn't check for criminal background, but it checks for any child abuse, and it comes up immediately. It's highly suggested. It's a deterrent. That's the Raptor system. Do you, have you, are you involved with any OVAES program?
We're not.
We're not?
I should say, though, just to clarify, for anybody who comes in and spends time in the building, we do require all clearances.
We do that also.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that you knew that we did that.
The OVAES is the bullying program, and I'm wondering, you know, you have the standard bell-shaped curve. There's always kids that, that bully. And I'm just wondering if you have addressed that, or do you ask them to leave?
No, we, I mean, we wouldn't ask them to leave. That hasn't happened in 12 years.
Have you ever been involved in an Act 211 committee?
I have not.
Okay. I assume this would be appropriate, Jack. Would you mind if I toured your current building Thursday morning at nine o'clock?
It'd be fine. We'd love to have you.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. Thank you very much, and a great presentation.
Thank you.
So we'll talk after about Thursday. That's great.
Okay, sure.
Mr. O'Donnell, could I just very quickly, sort of the idea of bullying programs? Because we will often be asked at our open houses that we have probably six times a year. One of the things that, again, a small school, is that we really try to build within our students a culture of, you know, really being able to speak up for yourself. Today, we just had an emergency council meeting because we, again, will tell people terrible things go on all the time in all schools, large schools and small. There was some kind of underhanded name-calling that was happening in our seventh and eighth grade, and we had an emergency council meeting, which is one of the processes that we look at, that we sort of gather together and circle up, and really try to put things out kind of in the center to work, to try to improve things. We, what's really wonderful about kind of having the smaller school and having our classes gather is that we have opportunities within the day to do this. Responsive Classroom is one of the programs that we look at to build not only within children, the quiet children, but to be able to speak up to things, to find courage, to really say, this is who I am as a person. And so those are things that are sort of built into it versus the idea of having a bullying program, although I don't know that program, maybe that is embedded throughout your entire schools. I just wanted to talk a little bit differently about the way we do it.
And that sounds good. I like that. Thank you. That concludes my questions.
Thank you, Frank. Just a couple of questions. I want, I want to clarify. And Frank brought up the safety issue, and I guess I'll follow up with a statement. You, do you require a significant amount of parent involvement in the school?
Require? I wouldn't say we require. We ask parents to give, if they are able, four hours a month. Some of that's done during the day, and if the parents do come in, in the classroom, then clearances are absolutely, and if they're driving on, during field work, all the clearances are required. A lot of the parents get their, get their four hours in or contribute to the school on the workdays that we have on Saturday. So it's hard to quantify what you mean by a lot of involvement during the day. At any given point, there might be a couple of parents throughout the building in different classes. Does that seem fair?
Well, actually, you answered my question. That's what I was looking to clarify.
And if I could just add something, I think that what's unique about charter schools, you actually can draw from various different towns. You don't have that neighborhood school. And so actually, the idea of parent volunteerism is a way for families to connect with each other. So it actually is, the volunteerism feels like to me, their parents are really seeking that out because they want to kind of have their kids be friends with other kids and really involved and become part of the community.
Your, your education model for special education is 100% inclusion, right?
Yes.
Your first year, you're going to be K to three. You're hoping to be available, open by the fall of next year, or this coming year, I guess?
Yes.
I looked, I looked on your student ratio slide, and I want to, I want to clarify something. It said you're going to have 5.5 full-time certified faculty. One's going to be part-time special education teacher, and then you're going to have five full-time teachers. Do you honestly believe that if you're going to start a K to three with 85 students, that one part-time special education teacher is going to be enough? I mean, is that how the model works for you in Sauterston? I, I, the reason why I challenge that is,
Yeah, I mean it.
As a teacher myself in an inclusion class all the time, I could tell you from special education's point of view, there's more than three or four people in the room at all times.
Yeah, absolutely. So the part-time special ed teacher may be also serving as a mentor to the supportive service teachers. So that's our point of entry, is that the supportive service teachers, while they may have certifications, but they may not, they'll be kind of under the umbrella of the special ed teacher, who may be servicing students, but also working with them to service the students within the classroom. That's been our model.
Okay. Dr. Holbman's touched on this Common Core standards issue, and you're ready to fully adopt it in June. How is your progress on it now?
We have various times, the teachers elected this year rather than us, using our professional development time to be working in their small groups. And so we are moving forward with the expectation of having it adopted by 2013.
I know that our endeavors have been going on for some time now. That's why I asked that question. And we're fully ready to hit the mark. I, too, would appreciate the five-year financial picture a little bit as an extension, so I can see a little bit. I want to touch on that. You have 250 people, K to eight, on the waiting list right now? And your estimate is about 75 of them are at the kindergarten, first grade level? And that, how many of those are North Penn people?
I can, I don't know the exact numbers, but I can tell you in K through three, it was 32 families were on the waitlist from K to three, and it was 40 students.
Okay. Explain the wait, the process for me. I'm a parent. I apply. What, what steps would you be taking to select people? What is the procedure for you? How do I end up on a waiting list? How do I end up in a lottery system? What happens to me?
So the way that it works, and it's worked this way pretty much every year since we opened, we have an open enrollment period, which is required by law, and it's, has been for many, many years, January and February. So we have a full two months where anybody can enter their child's name into the lottery. We are very careful in the lottery card we have, which is in the application. That's what you see, those little cards. We just collect the basic information, name, address, grade, resident, phone number, mom and dad. That's all we collect. In the beginning of March, we then hold the lottery, and names are pulled out of a hat. So the Sauterston, first of all, siblings, I know you know this, siblings get slotted first. So in January, we're asking families, do you have any siblings that you want to come? And so all of those siblings are slotted first. Then Sauterston, if we have 10 openings in kindergarten in Sauterston, after a number of siblings filled the kindergarten slots, then 10 names would be pulled out, and they would be slotted. The rest of the names are pulled out, and the waiting list is created based on that, the order that they're pulled out. Then we would move to first grade. Once you've been slotted, the parents are called. They're told that their child has a spot. And typically, do you want to talk about? Typically, what we'll do after the child is slotted is, in May, a lot of the parents will say, can my child come in? Sure, your child can come in. They come in, they often spend a half-day in the classroom. We do a little bit of assessment with them to see where they are, just so we know that we can prepare the home base configurations and the teachers and so forth to service that, to service the children, so we get to know them a little bit. At that point, the parent, you know, can decide. We ask them then to decide whether or not they really want to join us. Most of the time, they do. And that, at that point, they're slotted, and that was, that's when I would get the information, the form filled out that enrolls them formally, that that would be forwarded to the district with the billing, the invoices.
And the only additional is that the lottery is set, except it is fluid, that if a sibling is entered, I mean, is actually admitted to the school, all subsequent siblings go to the top of their grade waiting list. So it does change once a student is admitted.
Looking at your first-year budget, and the reason why I was, I would like to see the five-year budget is, I don't notice any contingency funds for this issue. And since that's through your process, there's a bit of variable there you can't predict until it happens. I can tell you from our own experiences as a public school district, that variable can swing 25, $30 million in any direction. So I'd like to know, how are you going to accommodate any types of swings of needs? Well, the idea that, you know, right now, you're only going to have a part-time special ed student, but that, that situation can change instantly with the selection process.
Absolutely, it could. No, absolutely.
And I don't see any contingency built into the first-year budget other than your $28,000 surplus.
About 28 plus 60. What would happen is if we did get a larger population, and you're right, it's, it's definitely kind of a wild card, and it's an unknown, and I remember in 2000, I was a little nervous about all of that, not knowing quite how that was all going to start. In 2000, we actually started with 64 children, so we were even smaller. Keep in mind that if we, if, depending on the numbers that you get, there is an incremental amount. It's almost twice. I don't know North Penn's numbers off the top of my head, but it's typically $10,000 or $11,000 more that you would receive. And so the budget, the revenue numbers here would change because we, I think I did an average of about 12% special education. So if we had, for some reason, like you said, 15 or 20%, then there would be that much more, the revenue numbers would change, too. And so we would then be looking to potentially hire. That's what we would be talking about, is do we need to now hire a full-time, a full-time and a half, another support person with the additional revenue to service the children? And Jennifer and I have those conversations all the time as years come up.
I would suppose you would. We don't have that luxury of saying, you're on a waiting list. So we get everybody. We pay.
I hear you.
So that, that is, that these, you know, it sounds kind of hokey, but that's a pretty nice model to be able to say, you're on a waiting list, but that wouldn't work for us. The idea of the no food services, I don't know what the exact numbers are for food service, but it's a significant portion of our people are on help for food, and it is a burdensome situation. I see it personally a lot. You have no future plans? I mean, what are you doing now? I mean, you've been in business for quite a long time in Sauterston. How's that evolved there?
We've not had food services in 12 years.
We've not had food services, yeah. I mean, our parents, now we survey. We have to survey by law to, to come up with our percentage of low income through a census little survey that we do, that we were directed by PDE. I mean, I can tell you that we have thought about it, and we are, we've looked at, are preliminarily kind of scoping out what it would look like with a group called the Nutrition Group, which services some charter schools. I don't know if you're familiar with them, in Philadelphia. So that might be something that we would, if it becomes a need, then we would figure that out as it presented itself. And just in terms of presenting is that we do monitor the nutrition of the students as the applications state. It's not that we're turning a blind eye to that. So, you know, we will be monitoring it. We have supplemental services that we do. I think one of the things is to have conversations with families, too, because I think what we've noticed, just in the smallnesses, things can change in people's own sort of year-to-year life, so we'll have conversations around that.
I appreciate it. We've gone into our breakfast programs, the situation, and obviously, as educators, you know the challenge with somebody hungry coming to school is not going to learn well. So I'd like to say thank you, too, for your presentation. It was nice. It's also nice to, actually, as someone else pointed out from the board, it's nice to see somebody who's already in the business, so we can get some solid answers to some of the questions.
Thank you for each.
I'd like to move it on. Dr. Pedrick, you want to go next? Thank you.
Thank you. Just to follow up on the answers you gave regarding special education. The model that you're using, the full inclusion, not having a special education classroom, are there any instances where you cannot meet the needs of a student, or do you accept any and all applicants, regardless of what their special education needs would be?
By law, we have to accept. We have to accept any applicant, and we have a range. I'm not going to go into any details because we have so few children that it does become identifiable data. But we have, we have had children with a range of disabilities in the various categories, and I can just tell you, it's worked. We modify, as Jennifer will often say, the adults shift to meet the needs of the kids. And so if we have a couple of kids with different needs, then we need to shift the adults around and have the adults where they need to be. That's what we do.
Thank you.
Yes, one of the, the downsides of being the last to speak is everybody asks you your questions by the time you get here. Yes, one of the, the downsides of being the last to speak is everybody asks you your questions by the time you get here. Yeah. But, um, yeah, I do have a couple of questions, or at least one question about special education. And my son graduated with a special education degree, and we've had conversations about it over at dinner table, and I took an interest in his education and hearing about his growth. And one of the things we would speak about is one hundred percent inclusion or other, other manner, or ways of educating special needs children. And one thing that he was adamant about in our discussion was that one hundred percent inclusion is, doesn't work for every child. And based on some of the questions we were previously asked, you, you don't screen children for entry into your classrooms. So, if there is a child that isn't responding well to the one hundred percent inclusion model, what do you do?
One of the things I should clarify is that we do not have, and I say this often during our tours, and I believe this strongly. We don't have any special education rooms, but if you look at our school, and you're welcome to come and see it, what you will see is home-based classrooms, but then there's other various learning spaces that everybody uses. So, and we call them great rooms at our school. So, the one, two classes each have a home base, and they have a little mini great room. That room is not a special education room, everybody uses that room. And so, if the child needs, or a few children need, typically it's a few children, need some extra support in areas, then they will be in different rooms throughout the school. But, they're not special education rooms, they're rooms that all of us, all the children use. And so, we have learning spaces at any given point with two people in the classroom. You might have one teacher in the classroom, and then another teacher out with four, or five, or six children doing something else. It's very common to see that at our school because of the way, and we actually very strategically designed our school that way, the spaces of the school to allow for that, to make sure that the individualization, small group, whether it's remediation or, or whatever it is, can happen throughout the building.
Thank, thank you. I, I'm hesitant to put words in your mouth, but I would like you to just sort of like, let me paraphrase what, what you just said. That you have not run across a situation where you have not had a student that doesn't respond well to the one hundred percent inclusion?
Yes. And I think our test scores really attest to that too, is that while I think this may be a different model for people, our children are achieving along the spectrum. And so, for us, this is something that we believe, it's something that we work for, it's something really at the core of our mission. That's not to say that within that, that we have had to, you know, there have been struggles and trying to make things work for students. Again, as Mr. Shapinski said, you know, when you are a charter school and versus the larger district, is families can also choose to leave if it's not meeting their needs, so.
Thank you.
Just another quick follow-up, I happened to think of it while everybody was speaking. Do you have ESL instruction at your current school?
We do.
Okay. So, in your, if, if this charter were proposed, you would hire an ESL teacher as needed?
We have, ESL has been a relatively new experience for us in Sauterton. And so, last year, we've done the screenings that we have to do with our home language survey. And this year, the, the presentation of ELL has happened. We have a certified ELL teacher on staff, and our intention would be to continue with the home screening, using WIDA as our pre-assessment tool. And as the needs are there for any student who speaks a second language, even if English is their primary, we would, our process is to do the screening. The ELL teacher, we would then be utilizing the one that currently is working with just a handful of students at Sauterton Charter School.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. At this point, this is the opportunity for members of the public to approach the podium. Again, please state your name and your address, then ask your question or make any comment. And again, please note that we have a court reporter here, so I may ask you to slow down or stop two people from speaking at once. So, now's your opportunity.
Just one housekeeping matter, there's no need to sign in, we have the court reporter.
Oh, okay. I didn't know who was called for.
That was me. Sorry about that. Just saying, there's, there's no need to sign in. Typically, we have people sign in, but we have the court reporter, so please do state your name and address, but that's sufficient.
Okay, I can do that. Joe Paglisi, live at four four eight Stonemason Way in Towmanston. My wife and I have lived in Towmanston for the last twenty-three years. We have firsthand experience with the SCSC. Two of our grandchildren go to school there. And I can tell you that they love going to school there. They perform extremely well, they enjoy going to school. And my wife and I have supported the school, both through their fundraising events and financially. And everything I learned about SCSC has been extremely positive. I appreciate all of the thought that goes into how do you care for all of the students all of the time? But, I think you will find that this charter school has done an excellent job for the children enrolled there, and I have no reason to think that it won't do a great job for the children in the North Penn School District. In fact, my daughter and son-in-law specifically bought a house in Sauterton so their children could go to the Sauterton Charter School. That's my comments, thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Alicia Thompson. I live at fourteen twenty-one North Line Street in Montgomery Township. I have three children. My oldest just graduated last year from SCSC. He came to SCSC with some issues. They welcomed him with open arms. He was three years behind in his reading when he arrived. They immediately saw that something was wrong, put things into place to get him moving, ended up with an IEP, and by the time he graduated, he was a year, only a year behind. He is now at Christopher Dock and loves it. I have two other children. My middle one, he's very good. He's the only one right on par. My youngest is having some issues. Of course, the reading specialist who is one of our favorite teachers at the school has been doing wonders with her and keeps her going. I put all three names in the first year we found out about the school. And Jennifer called me and said, well, I have one child that I can get in this year. What would you like to do? I said, well, there's no question, I want him in. I waited another year for the other two to be able to get in, and it was the best choice I ever made. I can't thank them enough for what they have done for my children. And I cannot wait for other parents in North Penn School District to be able to have this opportunity. I have one friend that tried for four years, living in our school district, trying to get in, and for four years, did not. So, I can't thank them enough. I hope you pass this, there's nothing you could do better for our children. Thank you.
So, my name is Vikrant Campbell, and I live in Ellison Drive, which is in Montgomery County. Sorry, I was a little bit late, I couldn't see your presentation. But, I have one question. We talk a lot about special need kids, and I know, and I've heard good things about your school. I have a few friends in Sauterton School District. I have a question, if a kid is doing really well, what, what do you do for that? I mean, age-appropriate, I know, I mean, there are steps, but few kids do really, really well, and how do you handle those kind of scenarios? Thank you.
The, we, we talked a lot about special ed in terms of monitoring, but that monitoring, that individualization, happens for all of our students. So, one way in which I can give a quick example is that math is really looked at. We use Singapore Math, which is a rigorous program, but we're assessing students all the time to ensure that they are at their best level, which may be that they would be able to extend and do the next year of math. In the rarest of cases, we've had students do math a few years above grade level. In addition, our reading program allows for students to receive instruction where they are, whether that be at a lower level needing some additional supports, or they're reading above their grade level, they'll be able to be with teachers to work on skills that are where they are, and to allow them to extend and continue to be successful. We also think that our multi-age classroom really allows for kind of that extension for students, so they have the opportunities to be the oldest and the youngest. And so, because we have two teachers within a room, that idea of individualization happens not only for students with IEPs, but for all of our students.
My name is Mark Sinkovich, I live in Hatfield. Been a resident of Hatfield since ninety. I've had two children go through the Sauterton Charter School. And the previous gentleman asked a question about maybe some of the kids that test a bit higher. A lot of the other questions earlier were on special needs students, which SCSC does a good job. But, my son certainly was testing at the higher end when I chose to submit his name to the Sauterton Charter School shortly after they opened. And the school does equally well with students at the high end as my, the, the status of my son has attested to. Both of my kids have been at the Sauter Charter School, and they moved on to the North Penn High School and Middle Schools. Transition, no issues on transition, and they've done extremely well there. My son is in his third year at Penn State Maine, doing extremely well. The experience at North Penn High School for both of my kids has been extremely positive. And I'm glad that I had the choice to, and I got lucky enough to get high enough on the list, for them both to attend the Sauterton Charter School in the, in the, in the lower grades. So, I'm, I'm a fan, and, and I certainly, as a resident of Hatfield, and the success even of North Penn School District for my kids, I'd like to have other people have that opportunity and choice in North Penn. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Amy Dunn. I'm here today on behalf of Megan Slack. Her address is two oh nine North Line Street in Lansdale, PA, one nine four four six. Here is her letter. I'm a parent of one child receiving his education by way of a North Penn School District agreement, and another child about to enter kindergarten this coming September. Both of my children at one point were on the waiting list for the Sauterton Charter School Collaborative, with my youngest still on the list. His spot is presently number sixty-three on the waiting list, but giving, given he has a summer birthday, we are re-entering his name into the lottery for kindergarten two thousand thirteen. As an advocate, I have visited the Sauterton Charter School, investigated their practices, and researched their results. They are nothing short of great. They are formally considered a charter school to watch along the achieving, along with achieving the rank of number six in the Commonwealth for Elementary School Performance, and number three in the state for their middle school. Wendy and Jennifer are both experienced and excel at what they do. The North Penn community as a whole would undoubtedly benefit from having a charter school run and overseen by the two of them. Furthermore, as an advocate who often represents those who do not quite fit into the traditional public school environment, I feel strongly that having a public, publicly-funded alternative would benefit many. This addition to the education continuum would offer additional opportunities for both educational success and further opportunities for inclusion. I strongly encourage the North Penn School Board to approve the charter school and the community to welcome them excitedly. Respectfully, Megan Slack. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kedar Eid, and until July of this year, I was a resident of Lansdale. I recently moved to Hallaswell to be closer to Sauterton Charter School, where my daughter is attending school since first grade, and she's currently in sixth grade. So, I've lived in Lansdale for the last seventeen years prior to moving to Hallaswell. And when we were first looking for a school for my daughter, you know, we, we realized that she, she had, she had higher aptitude, and we wanted to make sure that she doesn't get lost, you know, held back or whatever in, in her progress. So, we, at kindergarten, we approached, I mean, we looked at Sauterton Charter School, we didn't get, they had a lottery system, we put her name in, we didn't get, get in that. But, then we were fortunate to get her tested in a private school, and they accepted her even though she hadn't completed her five years, you know, whatever that age limit was. After the first year in kindergarten in a private school, we were lucky enough that she was admitted into Sauterton Charter School. She got, she got picked in the lottery. And from first grade on, she was able to join Sauterton Charter School. And what I've noticed is that was a wonderful opportunity for her, because she has continued to grow, and currently, she is at a math level which is higher than her current grade. So, somebody had earlier questioned about how Sauterton Charter School handles kids with, on, aptitude on the higher side. And again, we have seen that it's individualized curriculum. Kids get the opportunity to excel, they're not necessarily, you know, tried, tried to be kept with the rest of the class. If they have the potential and they can move forward, they're able to do that. And I'm really happy that, that the same opportunity is now going to be presented for others at, in the North Penn High School District. I wish the school was planned earlier, then we wouldn't have actually had to move to Hallaswell. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tina Stoll, and I live at one thirty-two Wentworth Drive in Montgomery Township. I think I'm going to be a dissenting voice for this tonight. I'm a graduate of North Penn, and my three sons all went through the North Penn School System and graduated from there. I've listened to the presentations yesterday by ENG and Montgomery Flex and by SCSC Tonight, and I like to voice my concerns. First, regarding ENG and SCSC Tonight, I was very impressed with the presentation, and I do like some of your ideas, like I like the idea of having a full-day kindergarten. And ENG was saying that they were going to have their school year extended, and I kind of like that as a parent. But, I don't know that these ideas alone would warrant the money that would be taken out of the school district. I think that North Penn might be offered, be able to offer a full-day kindergarten for much less, and perhaps that's something that should be considered within the district. One woman spoke yesterday about her gifted child not being challenged and not getting what she thought he would need at North Penn. And I, I was wondering why that is, because I have an oldest son that was identified as gifted in the first grade. He was given an IEP. His plan was reviewed annually by me and his guidance counselor and his teachers every year. And he was taken out of class in elementary school for extra activities. And in the middle school and high school, he took all honors and AP classes. And I didn't hear anything about that being offered at the Montgomery Flex School. As, for a parent being concerned about North Penn being too big, I think the elementary schools in North Penn do kind of offer a small school environment. I, I don't really think that they're too big. Some of our schools are very small, like Oak Park and North Wales. And I can, but I do see this as being more of an issue at the high school level. But, I do believe that what North Penn's size is exactly what gives it the ability to offer so much more to our students than you could get at a smaller school. I think Montgomery Flex, I know they had a list of extracurricular activities, but I don't know that they would be able to offer really what they say they would. My children, they all participated in athletics, and two of my sons went on to play football at the college level. My oldest son, the one that is identified as gifted, he went on to play at the Ivy League School. And while it was his grades and his highest SAT scores that got him looked at initially, it was football that actually got him accepted, as they were looking to diversify their student body. And in light of my own children's experiences, I cannot emphasize enough the importance of extracurricular activities and getting into college. And I, North Penn has it all. We have numerous award-winning sports teams. We have a marching band that's been winning awards since I was in high school there. We have an excellent drama club, we have a great foreign exchange program. And just to show that I'm not all about the sports, I went to my first high school play two weeks ago to see the Twelfth Night with Mrs. Leonard and Mrs. Murphy. And I was amazed at how well those kids performed. They did not miss a word of the Shakespearean English. The costumes and set designs were made in under three weeks. It was a remarkable achievement. I was thoroughly impressed, and, you know, I, I don't think I saw anything better on Broadway when I, we were in New York. I myself, I went to school in Germany for a year- I myself, I went to school in Germany for a year. It's an experience that I will always cherish. And so I really value the chance for an exchange program here at our school. We have several other schools in different countries that we're partners with. And I don't think that that was an option that was offered at Montgomery Flex either. All of these things and so much more are not and cannot be offered at a smaller charter school. But they could be put in jeopardy at North Penn if we are not able to afford to offer them either, if we drain North Penn taxpayer funds to support these charter schools. So I think as long as the funding formula for these schools isn't changed to accurately reflect what it would cost to educate a student at a charter school, I don't think that any charter school should be approved in North Penn because I think it would financially harm our district. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Alicia Thompson again. To answer your question, my oldest son is very sports-oriented. And I asked, I called the school district here to find out, since Sauterton Charter does not offer sports, what could be done. And I was told that as long as Sauterton Charter does not offer those programs, that my son could be accepted in any, any school program. I opted not to, just because...
Excuse me, if I may. This is your opportunity to make a public comment to the school board. All right, this is not an opportunity for debate amongst folks in the audience. Please. Also, another point is, ma'am, you've already had the opportunity to speak, and we'd really like to give everyone one opportunity to speak here tonight.
I have one question that, my understanding is that my tax dollars that I pay go to Sauterton Charter now. Is that correct? I believe that, is that correct? I live in Montgomery Township. But I believe my, do my tax dollars go to Sauterton Charter? No? They come here? They still come here? Okay, all right, thank you.
Hi, I'm Amita Sud. I am a resident of Lansdale. And I'm really excited to hear that we're going to have a charter school in North Penn. That's excellent. I've heard great reviews from some of my friends. And I was in fact hesitant to put my daughter's name since I was in North Penn. I was discouraged with the long waiting list. I knew that I wouldn't make it. But I'm so glad that now, at least for my son, I have an opportunity to kind of, you know, put him in the waiting list, hopefully kind of, you know, get him through. I have a question, and you did mention a little bit about the bullying program. And I, my daughter goes here in Gwinnett Square, and they have an excellent anti-bullying program. And they have a formal program where they educate the child and make the child kind of, you know, acute how to handle difficult situations in playground, at home, and, you know, in school and interaction. So I'm pretty impressed with that. And I hear that we don't have a formal program, but you do encourage a culture where you educate the child to have the courage to bring up the issues, right? That's pretty good. And, but I'm not sure if it's always, does it really work? Do all the children have the courage? They could be teased in the bus. It could be in a playground. And they may not be always motivated to kind of go and bring it up with a teacher or with an adult around. So I personally think it's a good thing to have a bullying program. And is it something worth considering? Are you thinking about it? Or things have been always under control and, you know, there has not been any issues? So something to think about and something to even benchmark what North Penn has. But thank you very much.
Certainly, you can answer that if you'd like.
I know when the charter school law initially happened is there was really hope that there would be a flow between the district in which you reside and the charter schools. And so we are looking forward to the opportunity to learn alongside North Penn. We utilize the Sauterton Charters, the Sauterton School District for questions. And so we have a very good relation with them, and we look forward to having a great relation with North Penn. You have experience with things. We will have things that will be unique to us, and we will definitely look to utilize you and start those dialogues.
Hi, my name is Patty Guttenplan. I live at 136 North Oak Boulevard in Lansdale. You may notice on your application, I actually am a member and treasurer of the Board of Trustees. And I have served as the treasurer of the Board of Trustees for the Sauterton Charter School since June of 2001. I'm actually here tonight, though, to speak as a parent and as a resident of the North Penn School District. I have two sons, and they both have graduated from SCSC. In the spring of 2000, I was faced with the dilemma of, my oldest son was, my older son was completing kindergarten, and I was prepared to enroll him at the local elementary school, which has a great reputation. And although he seemed pretty smart, he had a hard time sitting still for very long. And I had the feeling in the pit of my stomach that I would be in the principal's office a lot. So I don't know if that really would have been the case, but in June of 2000, I feel like I didn't have any choices. And then I saw in the reporter that the Sauterton Charter School had received their charter, and they would be opening in the fall. And suddenly, it seemed like I did have a choice. Of course, back then, before SC opened its doors, it was sort of a gamble. There were no records to review. There are no parents to interview, and there were no test scores to examine. But that's not the case now. And so we, as a family, came to SCSC because we needed a choice, and we stayed for so many reasons, but I'll just list a few of why we stayed. The class size, as was mentioned, is usually 17. The multi-age groupings is nice because one year your child can be mentored by someone who's older, and one, next year, he can be a mentor. The individual learning plan for each child allowed each of my sons to learn and allowed them to set their own goals. They could set their own goals for learning and already at that age become, start guiding their learning plan for the rest of their life. The math groups allowed them to learn math where their aptitude placed them and not where their age placed them. The 100 Book Challenge not only encouraged them to read, but helped them to love reading because they were reading books that they chose and which they could understand because it was the level that they're supposed to be reading. The fact that the whole student body could meet together once a week to celebrate our corporate victories as well as some of the individual victories. And the fact that the whole student body could fit in a space is one of the things I liked about the school. The peace table, which was mentioned, and the emergency council meetings, which allowed for conflicts to be addressed and resolved with the help of their peers and teachers. Therefore, not letting disagreements fester or become catalysts for bullying. And I saw many times that this was a way for kids to voice themselves, what their problem was. And I know there was a worry that maybe kids won't speak up, but it becomes such a culture at the school that they do. And/or somebody speaks up for them. The outreach we do into the community, making donations to the local food bank, building a community garden. This taught my sons at an early age the importance of community volunteerism. The fact that there's a flexibility to spend extra time to do certain things like the NASA Space Day entry, which happened to win in 2007. And then the flexibility for that whole class to go to Washington to get their awards. And then there's the iSearch, which is the year-long research project that every sixth, seventh, and eighth grader has to do. And so my sons did that as well. They learn how to research, document, and do fieldwork in a subject of their own choosing and source over the first glimpse of what they might want to be when they grow up. This culminates at the end of the year in an hour-long presentation that includes a PowerPoint.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. Cultivates, I'm sorry. This cultivates, this culminates, I'm sorry. You know, an hour-long presentation that includes a PowerPoint, visual aids, and even audience participation. So neither of my sons were afraid to present in front of their whole class because they've been doing it since kindergarten and first grade. And so talk about lifelong skills. And then the fact that we're part of a community of learners through our monthly evening collaboration sessions and through the Workday. And I just want to use an example from Workday. On many a Saturday, first Saturday of the month, you'd find our family there doing cleaning, fixing, whatever it took. It was there that my older son soon learned that he liked to help maintain computers. And John Penny, who's here, was one of the co-founders of the Sauterton Charter School and our de facto director of technology, was willing to allow a 10-year-old to help him. John soon came to expect my son to be there every time. And soon, my son was troubleshooting not only for his own classroom but for every classroom in the building. So he's now a freshman at the University of Pittsburgh and has a job through the university that pays his room and board. He's troubleshooting computers for students. So who knew it would lead to that? So I guess one of the reasons I'm speaking here tonight is to, is that the residents of North Penn no longer have that choice that I did back in 2000. It's almost impossible for a student in North Penn to get into SCSC because we have a good reputation and because students from the Sauterton District get first preference. And that's what we'd like to change. We like to offer North Penn parents and students the same thing we had: a choice.
My name is Mona Matwali, and I live at 2938 Denby Drive in Hatfield, Pennsylvania. I'm terrible at public speaking, but I'm going to do the best I possibly can. I think the biggest thing that I agree with is the fact that we're teaching this new generation that's filled with many children who feel entitled to everything, to give back to the community. And they do that strictly by watching their parents, who send them to these charter schools, give back to the community. So the four hours of service that the family gives back, I think teaches young children the importance of helping the community. And it teaches them a lot. And like, I'm a pediatric physical therapist, and I have twin five-year-old daughters who I'm, I'm on the waitlist at Sauterton, and I'm hoping, hoping that this goes through so I could send them to the North Penn Charter School. And I've already said I would give back my pediatric physical therapy, school-based and individual-based services to give back through funding. So funding comes in, you know, all these parents who make the choice to send their children to a charter school come from many different backgrounds. And I think that once you're in the same building together and you can give as many services as you possibly can, you help support the charter school belief. That's all.
Hi, my name is Dean Warner. I'm a North Penn School District taxpayer by virtue of a rental property in Towne Mason Township and a former resident for 10 years in Towne Mason Township. I presently live in Lower Salford for the last two years. And I may be able to offer a unique perspective in that my children, my two oldest children attended Nash Elementary and then Oak Ridge Elementary in Sauterton School District. And all three of my children presently attend Sauterton Charter School. As when my youngest was getting ready for kindergarten, we applied to the charter school, frankly, because we were, we found it appealing that there was a full-day kindergarten program offered. When he was accepted, my daughter, there were additional spaces for my other children. My daughter chose to attend. My son did not, and he's now chosen to attend in the present year. And we've been, we couldn't have been more pleased with the charter school far beyond the benefits of a full-day kindergarten. And I would urge you to give the choice to the North Penn's School District residents to have, to have the charter school in North Penn. What I also especially like about North Penn, as we've heard earlier today, is the community involvement. While the North, about SCSC is the community involvement. With Nash and Oak Ridge, it was much more of a neighborhood school. With the charter school, you have a broader community, which brings some benefits to it in terms of greater diversity and also the ability to have these workdays and spend, like I did with my son last Saturday, you know, time cleaning up the school, sweeping out the garage, something we wouldn't have been doing in one of the other schools, but we do at the charter school. And that is a positive experience. We also have much smaller class sizes, which gives greater attention to individuals. My youngest has speech therapy services, which I hadn't seen at such a young age, starting in kindergarten in the public schools in the, in the North Penn and Sauterton Schools. My older children have, have received GIEPs in both North Penn and Sauterton. And I think the thing that's most impressed me about SCSC is the academic rigor and that my children are always challenged, learning new things. And I just encourage you to offer that choice. Thank you.
My name is Paul Edelman. I'm a resident of Upper Gwinnett. I have two children that attend North Penn schools. Last year, I was also a candidate for the North Penn School Board. So I spent quite a few, quite a few meetings here over the last several years, familiarizing myself with the operations of the school board. Mr. Dooley, I need to ask, am I allowed to ask the panel questions?
Certainly.
Okay. I want to stress that this was a great presentation. I attended all three hearings over the last two days. I have a niece who teaches up in the Lehigh Valley in a charter school. I explained to her, as she would read some of my concerns with charter schools, not to take them personally. Children are entitled to the free, affordable, public education. And there needs to be a difference between what is public and what is private. But what I'd like to do is address the elephant in the room. And attending the school board meetings, this room is basically empty as far as an audience is concerned. So I'm very familiar with the amount of money that gets talked about in this room for the month, for the year, the deficits that our district faces. And one of the things that I'm curious about is with your expanding waitlist to get in, if your numbers are so great, was it even considered possibly moving into the old Sauterton High School, which could have accommodated a larger class?
Yes, that was considered as an option, but not pursued.
Okay. And just so that I understand the financing part of this, my tax money comes to the North Penn School District. North Penn School District pays their expenses. Additionally, students that attend your Sauterton Charter School then get paid in addition to North Penn School District expenses, correct?
The way that you described it is not exactly the way that it works. I'm not sure I'm following your logic, so I'll just, I'll explain the way that it does work. When a child comes to our school, the district fills out a form, a 363 form, that then calculates how much the per pupil allotment is. There's an amount for each district for a regular education student and a child who has an IEP. And then that money comes with the child when the child comes to us. The way I view it is the parent is deciding where they want their child to be educated and then directing the funds that way. But I certainly recognize fully that this is a hotly debated topic.
Right, so you, so you understand what I was basically implying was that if my child, if I were to apply to the North Penn Charter School Collaborative, okay, I would be basically pulling my child out of the North Penn School District. My tax money would still be paying the North Penn School District for their expenses, but they would also be burdened then with paying North Penn Charter School Collaborative?
Again, I'm not following your logic. The way that I just described it is the way that it works. When a child comes to us, an amount of money comes with them. The parent is basically making the decision to send the money to us. So it's, it's not really your tax dollars or my tax dollars. It's the money that would, the average allotment that would be used to educate the child that then comes to us.
Okay. And then the big one that I really need to stress, out of all three charter school hearings that I've attended, I haven't heard one charter school even offer any assistance to what will have to be dealt with, with this district. I know that at least the meetings that I've attended several times a year, I hear multimillion dollars' worth of cuts to have to be made, suffered by our students, possibly increase in taxes paid by our taxpayers. Okay, there's going to be a huge burden. The school, the school board and district can't mention that here. I can. I have not heard any of the charter school applicants even offer any kind of possible assistance to help ease that burden that's going to be placed on both children and taxpayers. Do you have anything to offer that would help ease that? Or are we looking at more cuts?
I can't answer that. I can't answer that.
Okay. That's all I have. That's all I have.
Hi, my name is Srija, and I live in 601 Evergreen Court, North Wales. I'm not much familiar with the American school system, because I was born in...
Start that again.
My name is Srija, and I'm from six, and I live in 601 Evergreen Court, North Wales. I was born and brought up in India, so I don't know much about the American school system. So when I was, and when I came to US, the first video I watched about American school system was waiting for the Superman. And I was like, what's this? And when I moved to pencil, I mean, north here, I was like really concerned about my kid's education, like, you know, she's going to public school. What is going to happen to her? And I sent to Lance, I, she's, she's doing preschool, and she goes to Lansdale in Montesbury, where I'm paying a fees. And I still want to have her, that culture, that Montesbury atmosphere, that whole school, I mean, that home atmosphere. And I went to a couple of other Montesbury schools around, and they told me the fees is 24K per year, which definitely I cannot afford. But every month, every year, I'm paying my tax money to the government. So I would really, you know, for a parent like me, who wants such kind of education for my kid, it would be like, it'll be a great, and I would be really thankful if you give us, give them a chance to have a charter school here. That's all I want to tell you. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Kim Buchanan. As from your application, I'm a board member, a trustee. I've been with the Sauter and Charter School Board now for 11 years. Both my boys, one has graduated, and one is currently in eighth grade. And I've been listening to the public comment today, and I'm just, I'm really, I didn't have a prepared speech. I just wanna speak from my heart. I went to North Penn, went through the entire thing, graduated 10th in my class out of 900. I did everything that could be done. When we decided to move, we moved into Sauter and just for choice. And that's what this is about. It's choice. And I think some of the concerns I've heard from families are, are there really choices for the children at the Sauter and Charter School? A little bit about my boys. My oldest is now attending LaSalle High School, a private high school. He played two years of wrestling, two years of soccer at Sauter and. He was varsity all four year, all four, all four years. I have a younger one who's currently in eighth. He played a year of baseball, two years of soccer, and is currently in a year of wrestling. There are many, many, many opportunities. My high school student was two years ahead in math. The charter school was able to accommodate him. When he went, entered high school, he is now at a senior-level math class, calculus A B. Okay? That in, in alone says volumes about the opportunities. Now, I know my son is probably exceptional, and I think there was some concern about, can they handle the exceptional students? Yes, they challenge them at the individual level. It's all about choice. They have a proven track record. And they, people can tell at the board meetings, I challenge them. Okay? I grew up in North Penn. I work in the community. I challenge them on a lot of things, financial, academic. They have it, and it's all about choice. And I think that's what you guys need to think about, giving a choice to the North Penn students. I have two nephews in North Penn School District that have been trying to get in the charter school for six or seven years, not able to. The waitlist is too long. I'm excited, my nephew's now in second grade. I'm like, this would be fantastic if he could get into it. It's a matter of choice. That's the message I would send to you guys. It's a matter of choice. They have a proven track record. They can play sports. They can do extracurricular activities. I know there are several students, and they're playing baseball, soccer, girls' basketball. I know several students are at the high school level now, wrestling, Sauter and High School, North Penn's high school wrestlers. There are opportunities. Just because some parents don't think about that, I have taken full advantage of that. I remember going to Jennifer and Wendy saying, he has to leave at such and such time. He has a game. Will you accommodate it? Absolutely. There are opportunities. There are choices, and that's what this is about. They have a proven track record, year after year after year. I think it's worth the read. I think it's worth the chance, and you should seriously consider it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else at this point? Comment or questions? All right, seen none. Thank you very much. Any, any additional comments or questions from the administration or the board? That's Mr. Sol.
Yeah, I just, I really appreciate everybody's speaking, the public comment, and you showing, applying for a charter school and taking the time to address our questions as well. There's just one other thing that, there was a lot of people speaking about community involvement in your school, and that's really a great thing. And it's not something we're unfamiliar with at North Penn. If you would go to the elementary schools, I bet you would see a half a dozen parents in there every day, throughout the day. If you go to back-to-school nights, you can't get in the parking lot. If you would go to the extracurricular activities, I think there's more parents at those events than there are people participating in the, the activity. So there is a lot of community involvement with North Penn, and I just wanted to speak to that on behalf of those parents that do get involved with their children's education.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Does the applicant have anything further at this point? I just have one, one little bookie. I do appreciate you handing up a paper copy of your PowerPoint tonight, and that'll be made a part of the record. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. That concludes the hearing.
Thank you.